Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Braintree Town Council meeting for Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. Could you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can you please remain standing and join me in a moment of silence for our men and women Thank you. Please be seated. We have the roll call, please.
Counselor Barrett.
Here.
Counselor Flaherty.
Here.
Counselor Hume is absent. Counselor Maglio.
Here.
Counselor Morin.
Here.
Counselor Quilty.
Here.
Counselor Reynolds.
Here.
Counselor Ringus is not currently here. And Counselor Ryan.
Here. Okay, for announcements, Counselor Maglio, do you have an announcement?
Thank you, yes, I do. So, I have an announcement about a series of events that are coming up. This will be posted and available. I'm just holding it for right now. It's the Four River Basin Summit on Health, Safety, and the Environment. And it's something I've been working on with FRACs, the Four River Residents Against the Compressor Station. And the... Each session will have a keynote speaker who is a credentialed expert in the topic. Each session will identify the relevant problems, their impacts, and what actions we can take. So it's on three consecutive Tuesdays in October at noon via Zoom. So it's free. Registration is required. Everyone can attend. And it's something that has been organized by the people of Four River Basin, Quincy, Braintree, Weymouth, for the people of the Four River Basin, Quincy, Weymouth, and Braintree. So, please mark your calendars and watch for this to come up. Thank you.
Thank you. So, tonight, we're very fortunate to have the Braintree Girls softball team here, the U-12. They won the South Shore Championship this year. So we're very glad to have them here tonight to honor them. We're going to call the coach up in a minute. I know the Mayor Joyce is unable to be here tonight, and she wanted to say a few words. So, Kate, are you ready to go? She doesn't look like it.
You got it, Kate.
Sorry that I can't be with you all tonight. I want to thank the council president and the council for being able to recognize the U-12 softball team's accomplishments this summer. We had certainly an exciting summer of baseball in town. I know we were celebrating our little leaguers, but tonight we're here to talk about the girls' softball accomplishments. Wow, all I can say. I know this team was comprised of both seventh and eighth graders, so hopefully some of the eighth grader... or seventh graders are going to come back again next year and make a run at the championship. But we're so proud of all the hard work that you guys have put in this summer. We're so proud to see you accomplish this on behalf of the town of Braintree. Again, just another awesome opportunity for the town to have their name sort of in the big leagues with the softballers winning the championship. I'm so sorry that I can't be there tonight. It's actually my 18th wedding anniversary. So, you know, there's a lot of life balance that goes on these days, but I really, really wanted to make it to be with you tonight. And so I hope this video message is a little bit just knowing that I am so excited for you guys. Congratulations, and thank you so much for making Braintree so proud.[311.62][311.62](applause)
Thank you, Kate. All's well that ends well. Good job. So I wanted to ask if Coach Kelly could come up and say a few words?
You'll have to forgive me. I'm a little more comfortable making speeches on fields instead of in halls. So, bear with me. I have some thank yous that I want to say first. I'd like to say thank you to the town council and the mayor for this opportunity. I'd like to thank the POCs and REX department. They work closely with our league, Brendan, Chris, and Scott. I'd like to thank Beld. Brief story, mid-season in July. We had a bad storm. Tree fell from the plaza side, took out a fence and some wires. Coach called me. I was down the Cape. I called Chris Griffin. Griffin called Beld. The tree was gone in about, I don't know, three hours with the wires wrapped up. So, thank you to Beld. I'd also like to thank Southside Tees and Sean Conroy for uniform designs, all the stuff you see the girls wearing. He's instrumental in uniform design. My board, the South Braintree Girls Softball Board. Nicole and Greg Driscoll, the league wouldn't run without them. Tom Rinaldi and John Svogdus for the grounds and for the fields. My assistant coaches, Katie, Mike, my daughter Maggie, who's at school, instrumental in helping me with this team. And of course, the parents, which you see here tonight. The parents were awesome. The parents got the kids to the practices, to the games. The parents got a ton of people to the playoff games, and it was a real playoff atmosphere. So thank you, parents, for everything. Self-intro real quick. My name is Pete Kelly. I've been president of the South Braintree Girls Softball League for four years, and I was also fortunate to coach this 12-U team. The league itself starts in the spring. It's a town league. We have approximately 285 to 300 girls. We play on the fields behind Flaherty. They range from T-ball to high school, okay? Our summer league teams are selected based on their play in the spring league and tryouts. This year in the South Shore... sorry, South Shore Summer Softball League. It's a hot league to say. We had two... we had two 10-U teams, two 12-U teams, a 14-U team, and an 18-U team. Five out of six of these teams made the playoffs in their division. So as you can tell, softball is alive and well in Braintree. Okay, on to our team. All right, real quick. One word that I would use to describe this team is resilient. This team battled back in a number of games, and it was always the next person up mentality for this team, whether it be an injury or whether it be a vacation. The girls always came to play. We started out 8-0. There's 10 games in our regular season. We started out 8-0. Coaching staff started to get a little bit worried, you know? We remember the Patriots. You never want to be undefeated going into the playoffs. Then came a game against Brockton. You remember that game against Brockton? I remember the game against Brockton. They gave it to us good. The next game was a Pembroke game. That game wasn't going too much better either, until the girls got a little bit fired up over some calls that weren't going their way, right? A little obstruction. It's obstruction for softball people, okay? Didn't get the call. They decided to rally. They had a huge comeback. We didn't win the game, but the tone was set there. We ended up getting the bye, so we had a first-round bye in the playoffs. Our first playoff game might have been one of the most intense games I've ever coached. I give huge credit for the girls for staying focused. The one thing we expressed as a coaching staff is, it doesn't matter if you kick the ball around, if you strike out, you need to be ready to make the next play. Because the game isn't over until the last out is recorded. This game was a perfect example of that. We had a 4-3 lead going into the sixth. Noel Well hung five on us in the top of the sixth. The girls came back in the bottom of that inning, scored three. Noel Well went 1-2-3 in the top of the seventh, and we managed to tie it in the bottom. Extra innings came. Extra innings for softball. There's an international rule. They put a runner at second. No outs. Noel Well scored two. We were a little bit worried. The girls weren't. They came back and scored three and won the game. It was unbelievable game. We took the momentum from that game into the championship game against Halifax. We jumped out to a 5-0 lead, and we hung on to win 5-3 because of our pitching and because of our defense. Different way to win. We were offense all year. Championship, we won with the defense. I could not be prouder of the way these girls played, the way they came together as a team, and how they grew as softball players during this summer season. Once again, thank you for your time in... for honoring this team. Thank you very much.[691.01][691.01](applause)
I'd like to ask if the council would like to make any comments. Counselor Flaherty?
Thank you. So, congratulations to all of you. What I admire about softball, two things, okay? One is when... when you guys are at bat, there... and there's kids on the seat watching, right? Never... in no other universe is there as much cheering for like, "You got it! Let's go! Come on! Shake it off!" Like, everybody is there for your teammates that are on the field or at bat. And that is... that is something that I think is admirable in all areas of life. Be the person who's cheering on the people near you, always. But the other thing that I admire about softball is that actually the very thing that kept me from playing it when I was your age. I had a choice. Play soccer, play softball. I played soccer, not that well, okay? And the reason I didn't play softball was because I knew that while I was going to be on a team, there was going to be a point where I would be at bat, and the ball was going to come my way, and I was going to swing at it. And maybe I would hit it, or maybe I wouldn't. But I didn't want to be in that limelight. I didn't want to miss in front of everybody, ever. I didn't want to take that risk, even if I thought I was going to be good at it. And I didn't know. I'd never played before. But I didn't want to take that risk. You guys chose that. And I think that's one of the hardest things in life, is to choose to take that risk. I'm gonna... I know I'm going to be the only person out there behind the plate swinging at the ball, or I know I'm going to be the only person out there in the outfield, and if the ball comes my way, there's nothing anybody can do to help me. I'm either going to catch it, or I'm just not. And not... your team... you guys can trust your teammates to be behind you no matter what happens. And I know that you were able to do that because you wouldn't have been able to come together and win if you didn't trust your teammates to be behind you no matter what happened. But you also know that it's up to you in that moment. The limelight is on you. And when you have the courage and the confidence to do that, that can take you a long way. So, congratulations to you, first of all. Congratulations to the parents who endured the emotional motion sickness of watching every single play, especially when their ball came near their kid, your kid. And thank you to this coach, who got applause even before he started talking, so you must be doing something really well. Congratulations to all of you.[887.82][887.82](applause)
Counselor Morin?
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, the 12-year-olds in Braintree are incredibly accomplished, both boys and girls. You guys are setting standards for everybody who's behind you, and you're making everyone who's older than you look bad right now because you're doing so well. So, congratulations. Making a travel team is hard, and you did that. Winning a league championship is even harder, and you did that. And no one can take that away from you because you did it. You did that through your own hard work, your own resolve. You had challenges that the coach talked about, put in front of you, and you met them and exceeded them. I hope this takes... you take the lessons and the experiences that you had with you further in life. I hope that you keep playing as long as you want to, as long as you love it. Keep playing sports. There's nothing better. I coached my kids for 15 years. I loved coaching my kids. Coach, terrific job. Parents, thank you for making the sacrifice to let your kids have this experience. That's the... you're the unsung heroes. You gave so much of your time. You gave up weekends and days off and nights and practices and all the stuff during a summer to make this possible. Congratulations. Your work... your sacrifices paid off. Congratulations, girls.[989.31][989.31](applause)
Counselor Baraka?
Thank you, and I'll echo the congratulatory remarks of my colleagues and also just offer that, you know, I think one of the best parts of this job and this role is being able to celebrate our residents and their accomplishments. And I'm so delighted to have you girls here this evening to do that because you, as we heard from your coach, demonstrated on the field. And by looking at the crowd here tonight, it reinforces this... the idea that, you know, in Braintree, we come together for each other. You did that on the field every single time you played. We have everyone here tonight to support you, and I will be looking forward to having you back next year for your next win. So, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you to everybody who's in attendance and cheering these girls on for their future endeavors.[1045.83][1045.83](applause)
Counselor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to also echo what the previous speakers have all pointed out about this tremendous accomplishment that you girls have made. And I want to congratulate you and congratulate your parents and your coaches. You are great representatives of your community, if you realize it or not. And I think your coach really hit it on the head when he said, "It's the next play. No matter what happens in front of you. What happened, put it behind you." And these are the lessons that you've learned by going out there on your own, being courageous, putting it out there in front of everybody. Most of all, you learned how to have fun. You learned how to accomplish as a team. And as a previous counselor had also said, these are lessons that will be very important for you, no matter what in life you decide to do tomorrow, next year, or 10 years from now. So, congratulations once more. Way to go, team.[1112.01][1112.01](applause)
Counselor Maglio?
Thank you. Girls, you crushed it, and we are so excited to celebrate you. We've seen many young Braintree athletes enjoying time on the fields, achieving personal bests, winning championships. Your winning season is a true testament to your talent and your dedication as young athletes. And your success highlights the importance of providing equal opportunities and investment and support for girls in sports. When we invest in programs that encourage participation of kids, for kids of all ages, all abilities, and genders, whether it's sports, arts, writing, coding, reading, or exploring, we empower every child to succeed. Let's continue our work toward gender equity so girls can reach their fullest potential both on and off the field. Congratulations, girls.[1177.33][1177.33](applause)
Counselor Quilty?
President, I don't want to reiterate what everyone else just said, but I just want to say, congratulations. You girls worked really hard, and you made Braintree proud once again. So, you know, just be proud of yourselves. You did a great job. And, you know, thank you again.[1203.24][1203.24](applause)
Thank you. I just want to say, I've been doing this job a long time, being a counselor, and we make a lot of important decisions in town hall. But nothing is better than we bring... when we bring in the young folks in the town that have done well in sports. And whether it's... we had a boys' team in last week. We have the girls' softball team tonight. I think we're going to have the boys' baseball team on October 7th. And Braintree is just killing it in baseball and softball. And the pride that you girls bring to your town of Braintree is just so wonderful. And I look at all these young ladies here that were, you know, this is... Braintree has a bright future when I look at you young ladies. And, great job. You gave up your whole summer to compete for this, and it... you can... you won. And like Counselor Morin said, no one can ever take that away from you. And you can think all the hard work you put into this. If you do that again for something else, you're probably going to succeed at that as well. So, we're very proud of you. I want to say thank you to you young ladies. I want to say thank you behind every great ballplayer, our parents that drive their children to the game, grandparents that go to watch the game, and the coaches that do a great job, too. So, everybody, great job, and thank you so much. Congratulations.[1303.83][1303.83](applause)
So, what we're going to do now is all the councils are going to come up in front of the table, and we're going to call everybody up, and we're going to give you a citation. And we're going to ask you... everybody's going to want to shake your hand so we can say we met all the... the whole team. And then we're going to go over in front of the stage, and we're going to take a picture. Everybody can come up and take pictures if you want. And then after we're done with that, we're going to ask everybody to please kind of move out because we have to continue the meeting. So, you don't have to go home, but you can't stay here. So, we're going to come up right now.[1346.33][1346.33](pause) Okay, when I call your name, if you could come up. Avery Lucas.[1383.71][1383.71](applause)
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Avery, what?
Sorry.
That's all right, Avery. And last but not least, Coach Pete Kelly.[1622.13][1622.13](applause) So, we're going to have everybody come right over here, and we're going to take a couple
Yep. Right, we're going to start in a minute, folks. Okay, we're going to reconvene the Braintree Town Council meeting for Tuesday, September 16, 2025. We're still under announcements. I'm going to ask any other announcements, Council Baraka?
Thank you, President Ryan. I wanted to let folks know that on Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., I will be hosting a Just for Fun Walk along the newly opened River Walk on Plain Street. You can meet at 10 Plain Street, one of my favorite places in District 5, and would love to have you take a look at the river, and take a stroll, meet friends and neighbors. So, it's 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, September 20th. We're going to meet at the trailhead, almost on the corner of Plain and Hancock Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Flaherty?
Thank you. I just wanted to remind people that it is not too late. If you are interested in purchasing tickets for the Sustainable Braintree Farm-to-Table Dinner, that will happen on September 20th at 6:00, outdoors on the grounds of the Thayer House. It is a locally sourced menu from the farmer's market, which was catered by Fasano's. So, between the quality of the ingredients and the skill of the preparation, you are guaranteed to dine very, very well. If you care to join us, there will be door prizes. So, it's a great time. It has been a lovely event in the past, and it's a wonderful cause to support in Braintree. And if you are interested in purchasing tickets, you can go to Sustainable Braintree's website online, or you can find them on Facebook and purchase tickets in that manner. So, that's all. Thanks.
Any other announcements from any other councilors? Council Baraka?
Thank you, President Ryan, again. Did want to make this announcement. There will be a seasonal family flu walk-in clinics right here at Town Hall, Sunday, October 5th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This is a great service offered by the town. You can get your flu shot. This is available for residents 18 years and older, students in grade 5 through 12 accompanied by a parent. Residents and participants, please bring your health insurance cards with you. But again, it's a walk-in clinic for flu shots, no appointment necessary, Sunday, October 5th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., right here in this auditorium.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from June 3rd, 2025. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. The next item on the agenda is 25003, Mayor Zoning Ordinance Text Amendments, Accessory Dwelling Unit Zoning Ordinance and Associated Text Amendments to Comply With That Mass Affordable Homes Act, or Take Up Any Action Related There Too. This is a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing for 25003?
Mr. President, I would open the public hearing for order 25003. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. This item was tabled, so we're going to need a motion to take this off the table. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. President. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. So, this was discussed at a previous meeting and continued to this evening. A legal opinion was requested, which was received from our town solicitor, Rosetti. You all received a memo with Exhibit B being the most recent amendment that had been tabled. Would anyone from the mayor's staff like to speak on order 25003? Okay. Would any councilor member like to speak on this order 25003? Council Morin?
Briefly, Mr. President, thank you. I will be offering amendments at the appropriate time to the proposed Exhibit B, but that will be later in this process. Thank you.
Okay, Council Baraka?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm looking forward to additional discussion this evening, but I think it's important just to let folks know that this, what we're voting on tonight is already state law, and it already applies to Braintree. So, in last August, the Massachusetts State Legislature passed the Affordable Homes Act. As part of that, that legalized accessory dwelling units, also known as in-law apartments, or granny flats, you might have heard them called, ADUs is the shorthand. That is a state law allowed by right on all single-family lots in every city and town across the state. So, that's not what the council is voting on tonight, and I think it's just important, because some of the things are in our control. Whether or not we allow ADUs is not in our control. That is already established by state law. So, what the council is discussing tonight is how to make Braintree's bylaw compliant with the Massachusetts state law. So, I'll pause there and open it up, but I just wanted to let folks know that this is already in place in Braintree. We are simply modifying our bylaws to make sure that we have the appropriate governance in place. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Would any other councillor, Council Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've had a chance to review this. Also, I haven't had an opportunity, and obviously we'll get a chance to hear any amendments to this current proposals as it states before us. I did have an opportunity to read through the correspondence provided by the mayor's office, which outlined the changes, and those particular changes as they would apply to modifications of existing bylaws, and anything new that would need to be added as a result of the existing, or the existing order as it's currently presented. So, as Councilor Baraka did highlight, the facts of the matter, and that these are state law now, each municipality will be required to implement this program, I think it's important for us to have a conversation around the setbacks. As was stated, that it is the setbacks, which is really the crux of the issue, dimension, height, if you will. And really, those are really important conversations for this council to have, and to have a very clear understanding. I've had the privilege and opportunity to have served on the Braintree Planning Board for more than a dozen years. One of the things that was always critically important to good decision-making was the due diligence that was clear, and it was understood by the public. I can go back to my days as a town meeting member, and any time that anything that had to do with the change to a zoning ordinance, eyes would roll. People would not understand them, because they're not as straightforward due to the fact that there are, there's relationships, and important relationships between ordinances, particular articles within the zoning ordinances. And it's really important for us as a town and as a council to truly understand those connections. What does it mean if we change a setback? How does that affect, what does it mean when you have in a combination a height, which have been some of the things that have been talked about? Accessory units. Accessory units, as it is stated presently in our bylaw, does not include an ADU, but this law will change that, or as Council Baraka will correct that statement. ADUs now are allowed, but it's those conditions around an ADU that is going to be very important for us to have a conversation, to ask questions of one another, and that we feel comfortable with those changes. One of the things that I have had a discussion about with a few different people is, we look at what our current setbacks are for various, excuse me, various accessory uses. Now, those accessory uses don't include any kind of a living accommodation, whereas the, one of the things that we will be changing is the, unless by special permit, a homeowner was able to build a second living unit or dwelling on their single parcel. So, we have parcels across our town, single-family homes, that are all different sizes. Different parts of town have larger lots. Even within neighborhoods, you have small lots. And I think it's an open and fair question that we need to consider ourselves here, is what's equitable? When we have a number of homes in, say, a few different streets, and I know I have a brother who lives on a street up in East Braintree, and the lots are very tight, thickly settled. I would not want to discriminate against an individual who had a need, or illustrated a need to create an additional dwelling unit. However, we also have to, and one of the most important things that we had to do on the planning board, as in our decision-making process, was, were we protecting the rights of the butters as well as the property owner? So, those are the really important questions I'd like to delve into tonight. And there's a couple right off the bat, one I'd like to ask about. And I think, if it'd be okay, Mr. President, I'd like to ask the planning director to come up. Perhaps he could answer, he could provide some clarity on a question or two that I asked?
Sure.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Director Matchek. Thank you so much for your opportunity to answer some of my questions. So, as things are stated presently, the current side setback for a home, for a single-family home, is 10 feet?
For a single-family home?
Yes, I believe so, yes. Although, my bylaws in front of me. I agree.
What do you mean? You haven't memorized it by this time?
Yeah, it's a 10-foot from the side setback.
I'm only kidding. Thank you. So, and the rear setbacks of the home is obviously much larger. I think it's 30 feet.
Agreed.
All right. Now, the accessory unit, accessory, accessory, I don't know, I want to make sure I'm using the right term here. Accessory use. Accessory use presently, we talk about cabanas, sheds, swimming pools, garages, et cetera. Is there anything else that I might be missing, or maybe that the building inspector might be able to provide from here? Is there anything else on that list? Thank you, Mr. President.
I think the biggest thing is sheds. I think 90% of the, 95% of the items that would, we would see as accessory structure would be classified as a shed.
Would be a shed. Is there anything else on that list, other than those four items?
Of late, people are building what they determine cabanas, but it's effectively a cross between a garage and a shed. But it's important to note that pools are held to a different standard from other detached accessory structures. Pools have a 10-foot setback from side and rear, and garages, sheds, cabanas have a 5-foot.
Right, and that's important to note. That was a later question. I might as well take it up right now, or a point I may raise, is that right now, I think you're allowed up to four accessory uses on a single-family property?
That's correct.
Okay. With the changes, it'll now be five?
Correct.
I think that's correct? In reading, in reading the correspondence we received from the, from the mayor's office, let me just go back. Yes, I think it is. It's going to go from four to five. Okay? So, that is a point of consideration I'd like to ask my fellow councilors to think about as well, as part of this. You know, we are now, you know, residential homes will have more of ability, have more accessory uses on their property. And that is just a balance. I'm not making a judgment on it, but that is just a balance we'd want to all consider, from my perspective. So, thank you. I think that, that was the quite, oh, Mr. Matchek, I still have questions for you, if you may, if you may. So, of these, of these accessory uses, the current setbacks are five feet to the side and to the rear.
Correct.
Okay. And what is being proposed on this particular order is that the new accessory dwelling units will also adhere to that same setback?
So, applying the state law, from my understanding, is they're taking the accessory structure setbacks as what that would be. In Braintree, that'd be five. So, that is, was-
As a recommendation from the state, or a requirement?
That was, from my standpoint, how I read the state law, that is the state law, is do you use the accessory structure setbacks in applying the ADU regulations?
All right, so let's just, using the current accessory setbacks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Does that mean that the town has the opportunity to change that setback?
I believe-
And if it did, it would be all accessory units, not just accessory uses? Language is important, I'm sorry. Accessory uses, and that would include ADUs, accessory dwelling units?
I think when outlined correctly in the bylaws, you could distinguish between both. I would refer that to our town, our city, our solicitor, but I don't see there, that could be a possibility of stating that if it's a habitable structure, a habitable accessory structure, that it could be X feet from the property line.
As long as it adheres to what the municipality's setback standard is?
I would say, yes. I would say you could not go above 10 feet if the principal structure is 10 feet, a 10-foot setback.
Right.
You know, so right now, you're really talking about five feet, right? I would say you can go above the, you know, are we going to go above- I would say you can go above the, you know, are we going to go above five and below 10? I think that's your kind of margin you're, you're speaking to.
Okay, so I think I'm going to take away from that, that when the state says that we must adhere to the current, and from your position that you just recently stated, that when the state says that accessory dwelling units will be subject to accessory use setbacks as it currently is, or as the town applies those setbacks, whether it's five, whether it's 10?
That's how I believe it, yes. But the principal structure is 10, so I don't think we can go, I don't think we should go above 10-
And that's a different definition, right? The principal structure versus an accessory dwelling unit?
Yes.
We're talking two different things.
Correct.
Right.
But I think you're, but at the end of the day, you're talking about five feet.
When it comes to accessory uses.
And where does that fall? Correct.
Right, okay. And I think that's really an important point for us all to understand and for the public to understand. Some of these questions I do ask for the purpose of the public, if they're following along, to understand what exactly is in place and what exactly would change by whatever adoption we, the council chooses to accept. Okay, let me just take one more thing. So, we have presently parking restrictions, or we have a standard for parking when it comes to residential homes, right?
Correct.
Are Res A, B, C, et cetera, right? When it's a residential described zone. So, right now, we allow, really, if you read, my interpretation is, if you have four people in the house that are all licensed, you could have four cars under 10,000 pounds in the driveway. So, what I can, so, the way that it states, the way that it states is, current allowable cars and driveways is limited, I'm sorry, incorrect, is limited to homeowners in the home who have a license to drive. And, and I think maybe Mr. Forsberg might be able to help clarify that, where he is very well known with the compliance. Could you restate, could you either confirm what I said or correct if I was incorrect?
So, the, the town bylaws require a single family home to be provided with two off-street parking spaces, so two spaces per dwelling unit. With respect to the bylaws as it relates to parking beyond that, it's allowed to have one vehicle per registered driver who resides on the property plus one. So, in your scenario, if there were four persons whose licenses reflect the town of Braintree and that location, each person would be entitled to park a car on the property as well as one additional space, so a total of five cars could be lawfully parked on that property.
So, it is capped at five?
No, not capped at five. Once again, it's one per licensed driver whose car is registered to that location. So, it could be a family of six persons, for instance, in which seven cars total-
Got it.
Would be allowed.
Okay, so whatever the, the, the number is of licensed drivers registered to that home, you can add one to that count, and that's what you'd be allowed. So, now, that makes me think about parking on the street. There aren't too many car, driveways in our community that I'm aware of. I know in my neighborhood that you can park seven, six cars there on a single family home. I've seen people have four cars in a driveway, you know, maybe sometimes they could squeeze in the five based on the determination of the size of the car, but, and the reason I bring this up now, because then what it, what it necessitates, and which we see a lot of in our town presently, is a lot of street parking. And, you know, the town has undertaken a roads project that has had to adhere to ADA requirements. And with ADA requirements, now that there are larger sidewalks being constructed on our streets, narrowing the width of the, some of the side streets where most of our single family homes are located. And for that matter, even two-family homes are located. And so, I would like, I'd like to hear commentary from some of the other councillors when it comes to parking, and the kind of impact that these changes may have of an accessory dwelling unit, because they too would have the ability to park.
And, and councillor, if I could make one point of clarification from an earlier question you posed to our planning director, under the ADU laws, as, as presented by the state, they explain that communities cannot treat ADUs differently from any other detached accessory structure. So, we, you cannot impose more restrictive setbacks on an ADU than, for instance, on a shed, or a garage, or a cabana, or what have you. So, just to be absolutely clear, the council is clear, whatever additional measures you may or may not adopt tonight relative to ADUs would also apply to other accessory detached structures.
So, it's all structures that would include ADUs, would have to comply to the same setback standards?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and if it was the will of the council to vote to, to adopt something other than five feet, then it would necessitate an additional change to our zoning laws for the other ADUs? Or would it be implied that those other units too, going forward, would be subject to the same setback?
That is correct. You would not have to adopt further regulations, it would be, it would be applied uniformly across the board on all detached accessory structures.
Okay, and those that are currently five feet, that are required to be five feet, would be grandfathered?
Yes, so that's the other important thing to note, is that there is grandfathering provided to existing detached accessory structures. So, you would not be creating a hardship for those structures. It would only be for something that was proposed to be new after the adoption of any changes in our regulations.
Okay.
Okay, so, hang on one second, all right? We're not, Joe, you've been talking for like 15 minutes.
All right, Mr. President, I'm going to yield back to you and for the other councillors. Thank you, I appreciate the speakers who rose to answer my questions.
All good, all good. So, I wanted to open up to, you might be coming right back to you, Joe, so, wanted to open it up to any other folks that wanted to have any comments, questions, Council Morin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just going, Mr. Matcik, if you could, I'm going to the recommendations of the planning board received by the council on March 17th, 2025, looking at the modified text note for that, that went in there, and the recommended setbacks for side and rear by the planning board was eight feet.
Correct. Yep, I wasn't here at the time when they made that recommendation, but I, I, I read that document and, and I agree.
And that would not conflict with state law?
I would point to the solicitor.
Mr. Solicitor.
Good evening, councillors, that would be consistent with state law, councillor.
Thank you. Okay. My concern, I'm also, Mr. Matcik, my concern is, as pointed out previously, we are going from four to five potential uses of property on a lot. And we are legitimately concerned with undersized lots and, you know, make, not being fair to them. One-third of, of the lots in Braintree are undersized, mine is undersized. That being said, you're going from four to five uses on this, and we're going to have to revisit this later. And I'm not going to get into it now, but with all, looking at, looking at the definition of a shed, looking at the definition of a garage, looking at how that definition has been interpreted and, in some cases, exploited by property owners to the detriment of neighbors. We've got to address those things, and, and we've got to address them responsibly, just as we are tonight. I want to thank Councilor Ringus for, for the way he ran the ordinance and rules hearings on this, and thank Councilor Barica and Councilor Maglio for their, their patience in dealing with, with me on this process. It's been, yeah, it, this is the most complex issue I think we've faced in my time on account, in my short time comparatively on the council. I think we've done a good job of looking at it. I think the proposal is well-intended. I am offering amendments because sometimes when we're well-intended, we over, overstretched and overreact, and so that's why I'll be offering amendments. But I just want to make clear that this is the beginning of a process where we've got more work to do on zoning and how it affects residential neighborhoods, and I, just defining what's good, what, what works and what doesn't work, we have to, we have to clarify ambiguities that are inherent in our bylaws right now, or ordinances right now, and again, this is, this is going to be a start, so thank you.
Councilor Barica.
Thank you, thank you, President Ryan, thank you, councillors Reynolds and Morin as well, I think this is a really important discussion. I wanted to bring up a couple of things, the first is on the question of parking, because you are right, Councilor Reynolds, I hear about it, I know we all do, in our districts, on-street parking is a concern. However, the way I read the law, if you are going to construct an accessory dwelling unit, if you are outside of a half a mile radius from an MBTA station, so in Braintree, that would be the Braintree Station down the street, Quincy Adams, or the commuter rail stop in the landing. So, if you're outs, outside of that half-mile radius, you must have space for an off-street parking. So, that, again, if, if I live half, more than half a mile away from the station, I want to build an ADU on my property, that building permit, as far as I understand, won't be granted if I can't demonstrate that I have sufficient parking off-street. Now, state law, again, not in Braintree's control, state law says if you're half a mile walking distance to the station, the off-street parking requirements don't apply. That's, again, outside of our control, but for, I think that answers your question, hopefully, about parking. And I did want to just clarify, because I know it's hard, if you're sitting in the audience, or if you're listening to this at home and you don't have all the documents necessarily in front of you, so what's on the table right now that we've been discussing is the current, the current bylaw today, if, if there is an ADU proposed today, that ADU can be five feet from the property line and up to three stories tall. So, and, and that's been in place since February, and we're working hard to get this narrowed down so that we have additional governance on how these ADUs are managed in Braintree. So, what the proposal, the current proposal without Councilor Morin's amendments is on the table, is that we would be adding accessory dwelling units to the table for all other accessories for a setback. So, garages, sheds, cabanas, and accessory dwelling units would all have a 5-foot setback, that's what it is today. I would say that preserving those property rights is important, and, and that's why I support adding the ADU to the current side and rear setback, so that we aren't undoing property owners' current rights for those, for those, for those accessory uses, whether they're dwelling or not dwelling. However, to add some governance around that guideline, again, today, 35 feet high, 5 feet from the property line. I frequently hear from residents that there are concerns about height right up against the property line. What we would be voting on would reduce that, if I'm 5 feet from the property line, I can only have my building, no matter what it is, be 18 feet high. It's about one and a half stories. For perspective, if you know the little garage next to the library across the street, that's about 18 feet tall, though I haven't measured it myself, I've been told. So, I think that that adds a level of dimensional awareness, that as we're closer to the property line, the height should be lower. And if you really want to have a 3-foot tall ADU, or a 3-foot tall shed, or a 3-foot tall garage, then you need to move further away from the property line, and as the planning board had recommended, hold that one-to-one ratio and have no more than 35 feet high. So, hopefully, that is clear, but again, just in the simplest possible terms, the current, what's on the table currently is adding an ADU to all other current accessory detached uses and lowering the height for 5 feet away from the property line, only a story and a half would be allowed. I will yield my time for now, thank you.
Any other councillors have any questions, comments? Any councillors like to speak for the second time, Council Reynolds?
So, there were a couple of questions that were, pardon me, there were a couple of questions in the correspondence we had received from the mayor's office that were highlighted in yellow, and they are questions that I'm assuming are for us as a deliberative body to take up. You know, number one, in the, in the section, the modified, modified section 135-603 permitted accessory uses in a residential district, in residential districts. The proposed modified text states this shall be permitted as accessory structures slash uses of garage for not more than three cars, and attach, an attached or detached accessory dwelling unit, a shed, and a swimming pool, other structures may be authorized by the special permit granting authority. The item for discussion that's been highlighted is, do we want to limit the size of sheds or pools, poolhouses slash cabanas? Given that ADU provisions, there is potential for lots to have up to five accessory structures, a pool, poolhouse, cabana, shed, garage, and ADU. Do we want to remove the special permit requirement for poolhouses slash cabana? So, the reason I, I bring this up, again, as I stated at the outset of my initial comments, that it's very important that we, we understand the implications of all the aspects that go into making this change, and either the intended or unintended consequences of our changes. And I think it is a responsible highlight that the mayor's office has provided to us in this particular case for discussion. And I'd be interested to know if there is anybody else who had a point of view particular to the item for discussion highlighted by the mayor in this section. Thank you, Mr. President.
Comments, questions, discussion from the council? Councilor Maglio?
Question, yes. So, it sounds like the distinction that we are thinking about, talking about, is that in an ADU, somebody might be sleeping there overnight, versus using it as a shed for storage or a, a room to change in for the pool, or a home office or something, right? Is that kind of, so, so we're looking at a structure where somebody might be living in as having different requirements than all of the other structures that are part of the list? And I would like to understand more about, I guess, about the difference that that additional three feet would make. Because, Councilor Morin, are you, you, I don't think you've mentioned your amendments yet, but would that be, like, are we talking about eight, going, increasing it to three feet to eight?
You're asking Council Morin a question?
Yeah, can I do that? Through the chair.
You can do that.
Through the chair.
You can do that, Council Morin?
Thank you, Mr. President, if it is appropriate, I'll answer it. Yes, I'm looking, I'm, my amendment will be proposing to adopt the planning board-recommended eight feet. If, and to put it into context, the current setback is 10 feet, so we are granting, we are not being more onerous than the current, current setback for a dwelling unit. We are actually providing relief that we do not provide now for a dwelling unit. We are going from 10 to 8 for an accessory dwelling unit. The reason, the reasons I think it's appropriate not to go to five, I think that I have concerns regarding the safety of going to 5-foot setbacks, I think, you know, I think that makes it more difficult- I think, you know, I think that makes it more difficult and challenging for fire to respond. I think that it puts, it puts people closer together to jeopardize their privacy. I understand that there are existing non-conforming units. And this, what is proposed says that you can, if you've got a pre-existing non-conforming unit that's closer than what would be eight feet, that's grandparented in. So if you're in a lot, or if you've got a pre-existing non-conforming use, and you wanted to convert that, and it's closer already, if you wanted to convert that to an accessory dwelling use, you could do that, okay? So you get eight feet, if you have 10, you get eight. If you don't have 10 and you have a pre-existing use, your neighbor was there when it was there, so they don't have an expectation of privacy that's being reduced. And you can use that. So people with smaller lots that have pre-existing non-conforming conditions can get an ADU. My concern is if we were going to five uses on a lot, and then we go down to five feet, I think the density of that is going to cause more problems than we solve. It's well-intended to make sure that everybody has the right to, but pre-existing, I believe the Section C, prior non-conforming accessory structure conversions, I think that fairly addresses that. And I think that providing the additional relief going from 10 to eight also gives a measure of relief to people that have non-conforming lots. But going to five, I think we overdo it. We go too far, and that's my concern. I, you know, I just think that five, having, going from 20 feet apart to 10, I think that's going to have an impact that will be adverse. And for that reason, I'm proposing eight. Thank you.
Can I follow up with another question? So, so the existing 10 feet for an actual dwelling, this is an accessory dwelling, so we're talking a max of 900 square feet. So it's, so it is a, so it's not really granting relief for an accessory, it's granting relief for primary, right? Because the primary is what's 10. Okay, all right. I just want to be clear on that, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other counselors have any questions, comments? Counsel Barrica?
Thank you, President Ryan, and I really appreciate the conversation tonight. And I also want to acknowledge and recognize, we did receive, all of us did receive a printed-out letter this evening from Jean Gia Grande, so thank you for taking the time to do that. And I want to also highlight that many, and as she concludes her note relays, that many of the concerns are around building standards and codes. And Counsel Moore, and I think this was what you were talking about earlier, that we would be proposing to take that up under a different, at a different time, because the building codes and the zoning codes are, need to be handled separately. And that instruction is very explicit from the state. But I do want to acknowledge your concerns, Jeanie, and thank you for taking the time. And I think that we should address these under separate cover or at a different meeting, so to speak, because they're not necessarily 80, the zoning components, they're more the building and standards components, and that we should be handling separately. But thank you for taking the time to do that. Thank you, President Ryan.
Okay, is there any further discussion, comments from the council? Counsel Flaherty?
I just, I want to make sure that I'm clear on one point, because Russell Forsberg commented that we cannot treat ADUs differently from any other of these accessory uses. So if we, the current setback requirement for accessory uses is five, if we adopt eight for ADUs, that would apply to every shed and garage and all the others as well, right? I understand. I just want to make sure I was clear on that.
Any other counselors, comments, questions? Counsel Reynolds?
I just, if I could, through the chair to Counsel Moore, and I just want to make sure that I understood the commentary of the eight-foot setback. You had made mention of primary dwelling units is 10-foot setback on the side, and would this proposed change to the eight-foot setback for ADUs or accessory uses have any impact to that 10-foot setback of the primary dwelling unit?
I don't believe it would. I think what we're talking about is in making an accessory dwelling unit ordinance, that we cannot be more onerous than what we are on the principal dwelling.
Got it.
And eight feet is not.
Eight feet is not more onerous?
It's not more onerous.
So by diminishing the size, diminishing the setback would not be onerous if we went from 10 to eight for primary dwelling units?
No.
Because that's an important distinction when I'm trying, that's the crux to my question.
We're not talking about primary dwelling units.
No, no, I understand that, but it was a question, a clarification that, of your comment that I was asking, was that part of your thinking in that statement?
No, no.
Thank you.
Primary dwelling would stay at 10.
Thank you. That was it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, does any other counselors have any questions for Counsel Moore? That's a joke. So, all right. Any other comments, questions from the council? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to ask if any member of the general public would like to speak on Order 25003. Jean, if you could come up and say your name and address for the record, please.
Jean Gia Grande, 82 Wilkins Road, Braintree. Thank you very much for bringing this to a very specific conversation. As I gave everybody a copy of my letter, as far as the ADUs dwelling situation, my four points were drainage, encroachment, parking, and town infrastructure, especially with the fire department. And thank you for taking this into careful consideration, because I think it means, will mean a lot in the future and how we go forward. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Any other members of the general public like to speak? Come up and state your name and your address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Robert Tomore, I live in Central Ave. I want to commend you for the diligence that you did with this. I asked for this. Thank you.
Would any other members of the general public have any questions, comments, or like to speak on this matter? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing for Order 25003?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
You're opposed to closing it? So that's seven to one. Okay, so the public hearing is closed. So the first motion is to vote on whether to accept the amendments stated in Exhibit B. If that passes, then we will then, we will then vote again to include Exhibit B amendments with Order 25003 as submitted. Once this is seconded, this would be the appropriate time for amendments to be considered. So I am going to ask the town solicitor to step up and very clearly explain what we're voting on, so everybody understands what they're voting on tonight and gets it right.
Thank you, President Ryan. For clarity, you as the president can entertain a motion from a member of the body with a second to approve the revisions proposed in Exhibit B to the memorandum that I furnished the council. If there's a motion with a second, then the body would be able to discuss any amendments. It sounds that like Counsel Moore will have a couple of amendments to propose. Those will be subject to deliberation. The council can vote on the amendments proposed by Counsel Moore and/or any other counselor in the body.
So I understand all that. That's not what I'm asking you to clarify. So what, so what are we voting on?
You would, you would, you would vote to...
In layman's terms.
You would vote to amend the initial submission through replacement of it with Exhibit B.
Okay.
There would have to be a motion with a second.
Okay, so...
Open it for discussion.
I understand all the motion parts of everything, all right? I'm just asking you, what are we voting on? What's the, what's the crux of the motion here in Exhibit B?
Replace the original submission with Exhibit B. Exhibit B text appearing on the July memo.
Okay.
Motion with a second. The body can deliberate.
So can you give us a Reader's Digest version of what Exhibit B is?
Exhibit B is what I consulted with Counsel Barrica and Counsel Maglio. This was what was going to be offered as an amendment, and I reviewed that and came up with suggested revisions so that we are meeting the requirements of the state law. And that's what appears in Exhibit B.
Okay, so it was, it was the 18 feet, it was the five-foot setback, 18-foot height?
That's correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure everybody understands that, what they're voting on. Okay. All right, so do we have a motion? Counsel Ringus?
Yes, so we're going to do it in piecemeal here.
Yep.
The first motion is to whether to accept the amendment stated in Exhibit B. So I would move that, make a motion that this body approve the motion with the amendment stated in Exhibit B.
Second.
Second. All right, so now we're seeing it's appropriate if another amendment, because we have a motion and a second, and we haven't voted on the main motion yet, you're saying that it's appropriate now that we have an amendment at this time?
Yes, as well as a deliberation to the extent the body wishes.
So do we have an amendment? Counsel Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to amend the motion by the proposed amendment to Section 135-701, Table of Dimensional and Density Regulations, Note 4, by deleting the number five from the side and rear minimum setbacks in R.A., R.B., R.C., C-123, and G.B., and inserting in place thereof in each category the number eight.
Okay, we have an amendment. Do we have a second to the amendment?
Second.
Okay, now I'm going to allow discussion under the amendment, okay? So basically, what we're doing here, the main motion is to have the five-foot setbacks, 18-foot height requirements, all right? The amendment is to change the five feet to eight feet. So if you want to support it being eight feet, vote for the amendment. If you want to support the five feet, don't vote for the amendment, okay? Any further discussion? Counsel Reynolds?
Mr. President, since the public hearing, you'll have to forgive my, I guess, lack of understanding and the Roberts rules in terms of what occurs after the public meeting has been closed in this particular case. Is there still an opportunity for us to table so that we could further review this and table this to another evening?
We have a motion and amendment on the floor right now.
And with that being said, I understand that it's on the floor.
If you want to make a motion to table, go ahead.
I would like to make that motion.
Is there a second for the motion to table? Okay, hearing none, we're back to the amendment. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, hearing none, on the amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
Yay.
I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on that.
No.
Counsel Flaherty?
Nay.
Counsel Maglio?
No.
Counsel Moore?
Aye.
Counsel Quilty?
No.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
No. So one, two, three, four, five noes and three yays, that did not pass. So we're going to vote now on the main motion, it is not amended, so...
Point of order, Mr. Chair. I have a second amendment, would this be the appropriate time to...
Absolutely, Mr. Moore. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Mr. President, I move to amend the motion by the proposed Amendment 135-701, Table of Dimensional and Density Regulations, Note 6, by deleting the note in its entirety and replacing it with the following: "An attached garage, accessory dwelling unit, or other attached structure shall be considered part of the main building or principal dwelling and shall comply with all the dimensional and density requirements for that building." This is the language that was proposed in the ordinance from February 2025.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Counsel Moore, you want to maybe give a brief explanation on that, please?
Very briefly, Mr. President, I believe this is a clearer and more common sense description of what we're trying to do. In the proposed language, it appears that the accessory dwelling unit would be accepted from dimension and density regulations. And it is, it is not the intention, my belief, of this ordinance to do so. It's to keep it in line with the other density and dimensional regulations. I think that there would be ambiguity in the version that is in Exhibit B, and I'm just trying to remove that ambiguity.
Thank, any other comments, questions on this? Okay, we have the amendment in a second. I'm going to go straight to a roll call vote, just to avoid any issues. Can we have a roll call vote on this?
Counsel Barrica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Maglio?
Yes.
Counsel Moore?
Yes.
Counsel Quilty?
Yes.
Counsel Reynolds?
Yes.
Counsel Ringus?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes, so I couldn't get that right either. So, eight, yes, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Now, we're going to go back to the main motion as amended. We have a motion and a second, so I'm going to go with the roll call vote again on this one, see how I do on that, so...
Counsel Barrica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Maglio?
Yes.
Counsel Moore?
No.
Counsel Quilty?
Yes.
Counsel Reynolds?
No.
Counsel Ringus?
No.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes, so that is five yeses to three noes. So we just need a straight majority on this vote, correct? All right, thank you, so that passes. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your patience and all the good discussion we had on that. All right, so the next item, can I see the package? Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is 25055, National Grid Petition for 268 Peach Street, or take up any action related there to, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get caught up here. Okay, I'm going to refer to Counsel Flaherty, Chairwoman of the Committee on the Department of Public Works, for a recommendation on Order 25055.
Thank you. The Department of Public Works met on this issue and made a unanimous positive recommendation. There was a good amount of discussion on this proposal, because the amount of work involved in along Peach Street is expected to take as much as three months. And because of the presence of South Middle School, that is considerably, it could be a considerably disruptive process. So many questions were asked, and it was explained that the, in advance of the construction, a meeting would be held between the town engineer and the police department and National Grid, and it was suggested that that also include the school department to come up with a plan for how to execute this work without, with minimal disruption and maximum communication, because it is work that needs to be done, but hopefully, we can do it without creating more disruption than absolutely necessary. it without creating more disruption than absolutely necessary by using a lot of strategies for communication and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a favorable recommendation from the DPW Committee. Do we have a motion on this matter? Yep.
Thank you. And Counselor Flaherty, I don't know if this is for your committee or the DPW, was it discussed that work only be done, like, while school's in session and not during pickup or drop-off times?
We did discuss it. It, a, a clear decision was not arrived at, because it was thought that that would be permitted to, a decision on that would be arrived at, at the pre-construction meeting that would hopefully fold in the school department, so they could weigh in on that decision.
Thank you. Thank you for your committee's work on this, too. I know that the utility work can feel rudimentary and routine, but it is incredibly disruptive for residents, so really appreciate Counselor Flaherty, your role leading that committee. So thank you, and, and thank you for suggesting the school department be involved.
Thank you, Counselor Berica.
Yep.
Any other councils have any questions, comments? And I know we have, National Grid is patiently sitting in the back of the room with John Thompson. Thank you for both being patient tonight. Okay, since there's no further discussion, do we have a motion?
Mr. President, I have moved to grant National Grid permission as part of the BSMNRL. National Grid recommends a relay of approximately 3360 feet of six-inch coated steel 1956 and approximately 20 feet of two-inch plastic 2020 with approximately 3380 feet of six-inch 60 plastic in Peach Street, from the existing four-inch plastic 2007 at number five Peach Street to the existing six-inch 60 plastic 2020 in Liberty Street, approximately 20 feet of two-inch coated steel 1960 with approximately 20 feet of two-inch plastic at the Peach Street Cardinal Street intersection, approximately 20 feet of two-inch coated steel 1968 with approximately 20 feet of two-inch plastic Peach Street Candlewood Lane intersection, approximately 20 feet of two-inch coated steel 1960 with approximately 20 feet of two-inch plastic at the Peach Street Morland Ave intersection, with all staff recommendations from Bells, DPW, and Braintree Police.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is 25056, Mayor Request for Appropriation, Smelt Brook Restoration Project, CPA Application or Take Up Any Action Related There Too. This requires a public hearing. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. I'm gonna refer to Counselor Berica, Chairwoman of the Committee on Ways and Means, for our recommendation on Order 25056.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The committee met on this issue on September 9th. We are coming to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation. I believe Director Matzek is here. We had a few outstanding questions that I believe he's got answered for us, so thank you.
Director, come on up. Welcome back.
Thank you. So I do have a couple maps for everybody. Did everyone get these? Okay, awesome. So since the Ways and Means Committee meeting, I was able to speak with Brian Keef, who is the manager of the Palmetto, Palmettos. And I know the major question was outstanding about federal funding. And speaking to Brian, all the federal funding for this project, which is in, which is a little bit under a million dollars, is still slated to, this project is still slated to move forward. All the federal funding is coming from the, excuse me, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers of New England. That is who spearheaded this project. And this project really looks to, in the words of Brian, looks to fix the issue that the Army Corps of Engineers built in the 1970s when they designed this, I would say, flow of water, right? And really, at the plunge pool, you'll see in the picture, as the picture describes, this project will build a fish ladder, right? And this fish ladder will allow the smelt trout and also the American eel to, to be able to enter and swim back up to native spawning grounds. But, but the, the major question regarding federal funding is the money is still there, it's appropriated, and it's through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. To date, Weymouth has already put forth their 12.5%. And this would match that to create that 25% local match, as then the, the federal government picks up 75%.
And how much of funding are we approving tonight?
The funding is for 1,000, excuse me, $146,375.
Okay.
And that is 12.5% of the total project. The in-kind, excuse me, the federal is $888,000. The project in total is $1,184,000.
Okay, we got a different amount, but...
Oh.
175, 650?
I think I just read it wrong, I'm sorry. I think you have the right numbers.
I'd, I'd be reading numbers wrong at this point. So, thank you. All righty, any other questions, comments? Okay, any other members of the mayor's staff like to speak on this matter? Okay, any council members? I already asked that. Any members of the general public like to speak on Order 25056? Come on down, Mr. Sisk.
Mr. President, Honorable Counselors, Matthew Sisk, 9 Cannavann Drive. This is a longstanding problem at this, at Smelt Brook. There's been a lot of effort and money put into, you know, daylighting, large portions of that through the landing, as you're all aware. This perch culvert was built with no way for the, as the, the two species of migratory fish that, that habitate that brook, which are the American eel and the rainbow smelt, can, they can't get past that. So for those of you unaware, Braintree has the largest rainbow smelt run in the, in coastal New England, and this will only add to it. So I hope you support this, these monies being appropriated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sisk. Any other members of the general public like to speak on this matter?
My name is Mike Ricciardi. I live at 683 Summer Street in Weymouth. I was instrumental in, in getting the first half of the, the Army Corps project underway, and I'm here to say that I'm happy that, that Brian and the, and the current administration at the district has picked up the mantle and carried on with it. I think it's a great project, and I'm happy to see that it's underway.
Thank you. Are you, were you part of the Four River Watershed Association, sir?
Yes, I, I've been volunteering with them for over 25 years.
Yep.
So I've seen...
Do you know Carl Palowski?
Pardon me?
Carl Palowski?
I'm sorry.
Carl Palowski?
Carl Palowski, yes, yeah, yeah.
Yes, Carl, yes. Carl's, is a, is a friend, yes.
Yep, you folks have been supporting this project for decades, and I really appreciate all the work that you've done. Thank you very much, sir.
Well, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, any other members of the general public like to speak on this matter? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing for Order 25056?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. All right, is there a motion for 25056?
Mr. President, I move in accordance to provisions of MGL Chapter 44B under the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee at the amount of $175,650 from the open space fund for the Smelt Brook Restoration Project, Assessors Map 3005, Plot 25. Said funding to be supervised and expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Director of Planning and Community Development.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is 25057, Town Clerk, Call to the Regular Town Election or Take Up Any Action Related There Too. This next order is required for notification for the Town Clerk to post the notice of the regular town election to be held on November 4th, 2025. The Town Clerk's not here tonight, but this is pretty straightforward. Is there anyone that would like to speak or have any questions on this matter? Okay, could you read, read what's next?
Mr. President, I move upon the request of the Town Clerk, the Town of Braintree, the Braintree Town Council, it is ordered that in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Town of Braintree is hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town, who are qualified to vote in the regular town election on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., to vote at the polling places in their respective precincts for the following purpose: to cast their votes on the official ballot for three councils at large for a term of two years, six district councillors for a term of two years, three school committee members for a term of four years, four trustees to their public library for a term of four years, two municipal lighting board members for a term of four years, and one housing authority member for a term of four years.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 25058, Mayor Proposed, um, um, a...
Appendee.
Appendee Ordinance to Create a Herring and Fisheries Commission or Take Up Any Action Related There Too. This requires a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing for Order 25058?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Gonna refer to Counselor Flaherty, Acting Chair of the Committee on, oh, no, 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 I'm gonna refer to Dave Ringus. You're the Chair of the Ordinance and Rules.
But he was not here tonight, so I will refer back to Counselor Flaherty.
Oh, this, the plot thickens. I'm not following everything tonight. Go ahead, Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you, yes. The Committee of Ordinance and Rules did meet tonight on this matter and made a unanimous favorable recommendation in favor. And I think, like, one of the things that I'm particularly proud about our council today is that we're doing all this work for the fish. Like, it doesn't seem very glorious, because they're just little gray fish, but they're really important. They are, they live in the ocean for all of their adult lives, but they travel through our freshwater streams into our ponds and to, for the purpose of spawning. And so when we clear the path for them, we greatly increase the habitat that they have for reproduction, which is, is really important, because they are what's known as a, a keystone species. That basically means that they are at the bottom of the food chain, and everything eats them. So keystone is the bio, is the biology term for that, but one of the, one of the people who worked on removing the Armstrong Dam described them as the potato chip of the sea, because everybody likes them. So if you don't wanna use the official biology term, you can just think of them as the potato chip of the sea, but they are important. And we don't often think of Braintree as a coastal community, but we are. And by doing this, we are making a real contribution to the health of our ocean. And that's something that I think we should be really proud of, should we pass this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and now would anyone from the mayor's staff like to talk on this? The Chief of Staff? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of Mayor Joyce tonight, who's respectfully requesting Town Council's consideration and approval of the proposed appendee ordinance to create a herring and fisheries commission. Braintree has a long history of protecting its waterways. Herring wardens have served here since 1799, and thanks to recent restoration projects, migratory fish are reaching Great Pond again for the first time in 200 years. The proposed herring and fisheries commission will carry that legacy forward, ensuring our rivers and ponds remain healthy, resilient, and accessible to fish and wildlife. The commission will consist of residents, at least three, but no, no more than five voting members, and two non-voting youth members, who will be at least 16 years of age and students at Braintree High School. They will serve without pay with a clear mission: restore waterways, maintain fish passage, and engage the community in stewardship. This work will benefit everyone: environmentally, healthier rivers, cleaner water, and more biodiversity; infrastructure, improved culverts and flood resilience; educationally, opportunities for schools, volunteers, and youth programs to connect with conservation; and culturally, continuing a proud Braintree tradition, tradition of stewardship that could even support regulated harvests in the future. This commission will collaborate with Conservation Department, DPW, planning, and state partners while seeking grants and outside funding to limit costs to the town. With fish returning to Great Pond after two centuries, we need a dedicated body to protect this achievement and build on it for future generations. By establishing the Herring and Fisheries Commission, we honor our past, protect our waterways today, and prepare for a resilient tomorrow. On behalf of Mayor Joyce, I ask the council to support this ordinance and help ensure Braintree remains a leader in environmental stewardship. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any member of the council that would like to speak on this matter? Counselor Berica?
Thank you very much, President Ryan. I am in full support of this this evening. I am absolutely thrilled that we're getting this before us. As I said earlier tonight, with the Armstrong Dam coming down last year, and if you haven't gotten down to the Riverwalk yet, I highly recommend it. Where earlier this spring, the fish were pooling and swimming up the fish ladder, and the fish are only one component of the river habitat that you can see now down in what was a former, you know, industrial site. There's, I saw a turtle, there's been a beaver sighting, and tons of birds, flowers. All of that is coming back because the river is flowing again. And to have a dedicated body that is going to be having eyes on the river, spreading their enthusiasm with residents to keep the river clean and healthy, I couldn't be more excited to support tonight, because this is just the beginning of what I hope will be an even greater commitment to, to increasing public access to the inadequate river as well as its, its health. So thank you, I'm full support.
Thank you. Counselor Maglio?
Counselor Flaherty, I'm never going to look at potato chips in the same way again, and I don't thank you for that. But also, what you mentioned about a coastal community, we are most definitely a coastal community, and we have given over the Four River Basin, which I will remind people, there is a forum happening to talk about exactly this, because when we bring the fish back and the turtles and the flowers and everything else, we may actually put a dent in the, the decades worth of pollution and toxins that have been dumped into the Four River Basin, which is feet from my home and many of our homes in East Braintree. And so this kind of movement and investment and sustained attention, it really will have a payback in the future, and I'm thrilled that we have this being created and that there's people that are also, hopefully, that are going to be willing to serve, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other councils? Counselor Ringus?
I second all of that. I think that what we're doing here tonight is phenomenal, both for the environment, just for community sort of endeavors. The Riverwalk is amazing. I take my daughter down there at least twice a week. We walk that as part of our walk in the morning, and it's great to see all the animals sort of coming back. The only thing I have, and I don't wanna belabor it or turn this into an ADU discussion, we have the mayor appointing at least one, but not more than two, non-voting youth members of the commission, who shall be residents of Town of Braintree, of course, at least 16 years of age, of course, and students in Braintree High. And normally, obviously, I support, like, us pushing the Braintree High kids, but we also have some Braintree students that might attend Blue Hills, that might attend Norfolk County Aggie, and some of the kids I know at the Aggie are, this is what they're sort of looking into. So I don't know if there's any sort of thoughts or discussion about possibly, I mean, we could even change that to adding possibly at least one, but not more than three, non-voting members, and maybe include Blue Hills and/or Norfolk County Aggie, so that we can, you know, those are still Braintree kids as well.
I think that's a great point, and I don't think we would have any objection to amending that section.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the council?
I appreciate Counselor Ringus, you bringing that up. I think that's incredibly important, and I don't know if, if it would be covered if we changed the language from Braintree High School to Braintree Public Schools, since those schools are funded through, in part, our budget, or if we need to make a separate amendment to add a seat specifically for those vocational schools.
What if we just struck students at Braintree High School and kept Town of Braintree residents at least 16 years of age?
I like it.
Would that be fair?
Do I need to make that as a formal amendment?
Well, that's not part of the motion, it's, I think, but in the spirit of the motion, she said that she's going to strike that, so I think we're good. Okay. Any other comments, questions from the council? Okay. Anybody from the general public wish to speak on this matter?
Mr. President, Honorable Councillors, Matthew Sisk, Nine Canavan Drive, Braintree, Councilmore, could I ask you to pass? It's a passing out a little, it's the original legislation from 1799 that created the herring commission, or herring ward, the creation of herring wardens in Braintree. By way of qualification, I also have the honor of serving on the Massachusetts State Wildlife Board, and I'm the member that represents and has an interest in endangered species and migratory birds. So by creating the Herring and Fisheries Commission, Braintree has a long tradition of stewardship over its waterways. Herring wardens have safeguarded fish runs here since 1799, ensuring that river herring and other migratory species could thrive in our local streams and ponds. The Manadequitt River restoration projects included the removal of the Armstrong and Ames Pond dams and installation of new fishways. Was what, this particular project was one of the most successful fish passage improvement projects in coastal Massachusetts. For the first time in over 200 years, as you've all heard, fish can now return to Great Pond. And one of the things we found, that if I had told you during the studies of this that it would have happened, that fish were going to get up to Sunset Lake through that little feeder stream that goes onto Pond Street, I would have told you, you're crazy. But they made it all the way up there. So they got all the way up that little tiny pond, little tiny stream. It was pretty amazing, the resiliency of that fish. Establishing this commission continues that legacy of leadership and ensures Braintree remains a model of environmental restoration in New England. The mission and purpose of the commission would be that the Herring and Fisheries Commission would restore, protect, and enhance the ecological integrity of our rivers, streams, brooks, and ponds. The focus would be on migratory fish, like elk, the four species that we have in our native waters in Braintree, which are elwife, blueback, herring, rainbow smelt, and the American eel, which are not only vital to the health of our ecosystem, as potato chips, but also hold cultural, most importantly, hold cultural and historic significance in Massachusetts. The commission's work would support a sustainable fish passage, resilient infrastructure, and healthier waterways for future generations. For example, they could support fish passage by maintaining the ladders, cleaning streams, and improving culverts. It's important to note that most of these herring commissions and wardens that are on these commissions in other communities, they're all volunteers, and these are people that are in the river, like literally in the river and working. It's, they do have meetings, but, like you all do, but it is very much a working committee. They could, they will remove obstructions such as fallen trees, debris, and invasive plants that block fish migration, coordinate with state agencies like the Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries to align with statewide conservation goals. As a matter of fact, back in the 1930s and 40s, there was concern that fish migrations would become privatized, so the legislature created a set aside where herring commissions would be given under local authority. The DMF took over the management of migratory fish. However, under the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapters 130, Section 94, they allowed for local management of the river with their consent, which we get every year in a stream maintenance plan to the Conservation Commission. They could promote, you know, one of the problems we talk about here is, you know, taking dams down, is, taking dams down is important for fish migration, but it is also very important for flood control. That's the public safety reason with which we do it, and these committees in other communities help with that. They can engage the, they should and will engage the community through public education, volunteer cleanups, and partnership with schools and local organizations. In closing, I strongly support the council. I appreciate the mayor's putting this forward, and I urge you all to please support this. I think it's a fantastic opportunity for our town. I was involved in the project here from the jump with DMF and some of the other involvements I have, and I think that what is keen to understand, for those of you who have a competitive nature, I think that Braintree, this, one of the reasons this project was chosen by the state is the sheer potential acreage of spawning ground. So right now, we have anywhere between 50,000 to 60,000 herring that are moving up, and they couldn't get past where the dams were, right? For example, Weymouth has probably close to a million fish. We have more spawning acreage than Weymouth does by a long run. If you count Great Pond, you can now count Sunset Lake, the Cochado River system, which is a feeder stream to the Manadequitt, and the other feeder stream. So I believe that Braintree, within a decade, will have the most successful herring run in the Commonwealth. Thank you.
Any other members of the public like to speak?
Good evening again. Good evening, yeah, again. My name's Mike Ricciardi, and I live at 683 Summer Street in Weymouth. I'd like to speak in favor of the creation of the Herring and Fisheries Commission. I've been trained in stream channel maintenance by the Massachusetts Department of Marine Fisheries, and I've been working in the Manadequitt and Farm Rivers for over two decades. I deeply appreciate the Joyce administration's long-term view and the commitment in proposing the creation of the commission. The effort to ensure fish passage at the same time helps protect Riverside Butters' property. As with flooding, fish populations do not come with guarantees. A lot can happen in the three years it will take before this year's new fish are old enough to spawn. In coastal communities, it's not unheard of that an entire generation of spawning age river herring is lost as bycatch to commercial trawlers. Through the implementation of this commission and the job it has to perform, Braintree will be once again stepping up to the plate, not only to contribute to, but also to benefit from a more realistic connection to the natural resources it is immersed in. And I appreciate the time that the council will take to vote on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the public? Any member of the public like to speak on this matter? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? I opposed. That's unanimous. Do we have a motion, Council Ringus?
Yes, Mr. President, I move in accordance to Chapter 2.700.010 of the Code of the Town of Braintree for the approval and ordination of proposed Chapter 2.900 entitled Braintree Herring and Fisheries Commission for the creation of the Herring and Fisheries Commission in the town of Braintree with a slight amendment to Point 030, composition direction of the commission striking students at Braintree High School.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? I opposed. That's unanimous. Thank you. Do we have a motion to refer all new business to the respective committees?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? I opposed. That's unanimous. Okay. So I'd like to thank B. Cam, Bill Needham, and Jerry Cormack for televising our meeting tonight. Our next meeting is going to be on Tuesday, October 7th, right here, at 7:30 p.m. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? I opposed. That's unanimous. We are now adjourned. Thank you, everybody.